6:00 PM, we will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of UMBLE Independent School District to order. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is 6:00 PM. The time is now 7:08 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Reminder that the meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed, and with that, our first item. Our colors tonight are presented by the UMBLE High School Army JROTC. I would ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the Texas flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
We will now observe a moment of silence. You may be seated. Moving to our next item, agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Absolutely. January is School Board Recognition Month throughout the state of Texas. School Board members are volunteers. They donate hundreds of hours to attend meetings, consider issues, set policy, and participate in student and community events. Tonight's inspiring moment features students from throughout the district with a special thank you to our school board.
We would like to take a moment to thank the UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees for their service.
Thank you! Thank you, UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees!
Thank you for this yummy nutritious food!
Thank you for keeping us safe. Now, I gotta get to class, you know. Mr. Buck? Could I get a temporary, please?
Thank you!
Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for putting students first.
Thank you for bearing enough about us to volunteer your time!
Hours and hours of trainings and meetings and emails, oh my!
Thank you so much for your dedication.
How far that little candle throws his beams. So shines a good deed in a weary world. Thank you, UMBLE ISD Board of Trustees for shining so brightly.
For helping us maintain our competitive edge.
Thank you!
Thank you for allowing us to pursue our own personalized pathways to success.
And supporting new and exciting progress!
Thank you!
Thank you for providing us with our beautiful.
Thank you for forgiving and us.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
Merci, Monsieur Scarfo.
Vielen Dank, Frau Morrison.
Tipi gratias ago, domine siten.
Gracias, señor Coach Joffre.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Well, thank you so much to all of our students and staff members who participated in that video. The Board would like to see an encore of it. They liked it a lot. It was amazing. And thank you to Public Communications for putting it together. To celebrate all that you do, Board members, you will find at your seats a commemorative book featuring photos from the past year, as well as cards and letters submitted by students from the following campuses: Deerwood Elementary School, Elm Grove Elementary School, Summerwood Elementary School, Whispering Pines Elementary School, Riverwood Middle School, Westlake Middle School, and Wood Creek Middle School. The hot air balloon artwork on the front of the dais was created by students in the Autumn Creek Elementary Art Club under the direction of teachers Autumn Jackson and Ramona Michael. The paper mache hot air balloons were created by students in the Westlake Middle School Art Club under the direction of teacher Laura Wells. The banners and posters hanging throughout the building were created by students at Summerwood, Whispering Pines Elementary Schools, Riverwood Middle School, Westlake Middle School, and Kingwood High School. Thank you for being an outstanding school board that supports every teacher and campus in doing what is best for students. So, thank you very much, trustees. It's very well deserved. It's not been the easiest couple of years.[477.17][477.20](laughing) Next, our community has a longstanding tradition of supporting students who raise animals through our ag programs. In three weeks, we will celebrate, get this, the 75th Annual Livestock Show. Tonight, FFA students from Atascida, UMBLE, Kingwood, Kingwood Park, and Summer Creek High Schools are here to tell us more about this very exciting event.
My name is Ember Benavides. I'm a senior at Summer Creek High School, and this year I'm raising a goat. The students of FFA would like to invite you and our community to the 75th Livestock Show, which will run from Tuesday, February 1st to Friday, February 4th at the UMBLE Civic Center and Arena. There are two major ways to show us some support. One is to participate as a buyer in our auction on February 3rd, Thursday. By selling our projects, students obtain money for livestock projects and future educational expenses. Additionally, you can also participate in our freezer sale, which is held in conjunction with our live auction.
My name is Haley Clark, and I'm a senior at Atascida High School. This year, I'm raising a lamb and a market steer for the livestock show. This year is a very special year because it is the 75th Annual UMBLE Livestock Show. On the screen, you can see a photo from 1984. In this photo is longtime member of the UMBLE community and current UMBLE ISD teacher, Ms. Deanne Dilks-Hamilton. She is auctioning off her turkey. During the livestock show, there will be a historical display of photos showing how the livestock show has changed over the past 75 years. Each year, we host Special Kids Day for over 500 special needs students to come and visit with the animals. This year, we have added a new event. We will have a Unified Livestock Show on Tuesday, February 1st at 7:00 PM, where a life skills or applied skills student will buddy up with an FFA member and exhibit a lamb or a goat. We are so excited to add this experience to our livestock show.
Hello, my name is Morgan Edwards. I'm a senior at UMBLE High School, and this year I'm raising a pig. As FFA students, we are very appreciative of the UMBLE ISD community for helping and supporting our learning by providing great faculties through bonds and other funding. At the South Ag Barn, we now have a new arena and restrooms. This is helpful to us because we are able to have progress shows and practices in rain or shine.
Hello, my name is Carly Solomon. I'm a junior at Kingwood Park High School, and this year I am raising a pig and turkeys. At the North Ag Facility, we have to evacuate our animals every time there's a chance for heavy rain because our barn is located in an area that is prone to flooding. As you can see, we are looking forward to opening the North Agriculture Science Center in the coming months. The North Ag Facility will have a state-of-the-art facilities for all species, plus a covered arena and restrooms in an area safe for us and our animals.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jordan Bird. I'm a senior at Kingwood High School, and this year I'm raising a pig. In FFA, we learn more than just animal husbandry. We learn about business, public speaking, and leadership skills. Here are just some of UMBLE ISD FFA's accomplishments throughout this year. We had 25 members complete a detailed record and expense report to obtain their Lone Star degree, which is the highest degree in Texas FFA. Additionally, we had five alumni students who completed 540 hours of agriculture education, completed one year of a post-secondary agricultural program, 50 hours of community service, and held expenses towards agriculture to receive their American degree, which is the highest degree in national FFA. Furthermore, we had two teams compete at the State Leadership Development Contest in early December, with one team placing seventh out of the 651 teams in all of Texas. FFA members also have great role models to look up to in this community. This year, the Livestock Show is dedicated to Ms. Lynette Calfey, a former UMBLE ISD teacher and assistant principal, who helped open Atascida Middle School. For years, she helped with the rodeo and livestock show, even after her sons graduated. She was a member of the Stampede Association and was a founding member of the Education Foundation Rodeo and Cook-Off Committee. If you see her, please congratulate her for all her hard work over the years. She deserves it. Thank you for all you do for your students, your teachers, and your community. We look forward to seeing you all at the livestock show. And be sure to check out the website, umbollivestockshow.com, for a complete schedule of events.
Not only are they excellent spokespeople, but they also bring gifts. Every single time. Thank you so much.
Thank you!
Thank you.
Thank you!
Thank you so much!
Thank you.
What's that?
She doesn't like it.
I know, right?
I'm sure. I'm sure we could get that hung up there for you, Mr. Scarfo. Oh, thank you so much! Thank you so much, ladies. You did an amazing job with your speeches and incredible gifts, and we're very proud of all the work that you are doing raising your animals, and we look forward to seeing you at the auction, and good luck. Hope that you all make sale or freezer sale or all of that stuff. So, in any case, thank you for being here. I think it's sort of notable that we have such an incredible Board of Trustees, and because of that, we have programs like this one that showcases the level of excellence in everything in UMBLE ISD and the support that this Board gives to whatever program of study students really find their passions in. So, thank you for being here and illustrating how proud that we are of all that you all do. Thank you. And if you weren't planning on it, you should absolutely attend the livestock auction. It is definitely something to be part of and see all the work that our students do in the way that that whole thing is done. Larkin and Les Wern and his team do an excellent job. That concludes tonight's recognitions. We're happy to be back in school after winter break, and we look forward to resuming our super staffer recognitions next month at the February Board Meeting. That's it for now, yeah. I don't think you have any more room up here for anything, so we're gonna have to take a pause. Thank you.
The next item is public comment. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so following the procedure outlined on the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the Board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with Board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the UMBLE ISD website. Our first speakers are Stacy Ward, James Ellis, and Louis Mascolo.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Fagan, community members, parents, and staff. My name is Stacy Ward. I'm a member of UMBLE ATPE, and I'm here with Louis Mascolo, who is our past president of UMBLE ATPE, and James Ellis, who is a retired UMBLE High School teacher and also a member of UMBLE ATPE. On behalf of... Using my teacher voice. On behalf of UMBLE Association of Texas Professional Educators, we'd like to take this opportunity to speak with the Board and recognize you for the job that you do for our community, our students, and our teachers. Our School Board members are just ordinary people, your friends, neighbors, colleagues, who are just dedicated to our community and our children. As a Board, you provide a vital service in our community. It's been said that public education is the backbone of American society, and local school boards are deeply rooted in that tradition. The job of a School Board member is tough, the hours long, and the things few and far between. Too often, we forget about the personal sacrifices that our Board members make. You spend hours in meetings, on committees, advocating for our schools with politicians, making tough decisions for our district. You study, discuss, and research, and evaluate so you can make informed decisions on complex issues. The month of January typically marks the time when we show our appreciation and observance of the School Board. While this month is dedicated to you, we can certainly share our appreciation throughout the school as well. UMBLE ATP, ATPE, would like to thank our Board members for the decisions that are made for our 2,700 teachers and staff and 43,000-plus students. We applaud you for your vision and your willingness to accept responsibility for today's students to become tomorrow's leaders. Please accept a small token of our appreciation for your hard work and dedication to UMBLE ISD. They're just the small red bag. We just have a little gift for you there. And on a side note, I would like to say that the South Ag Barn is so much nicer now than it was in 2008 when my husband and I, I mean, my daughter, raised three pigs. So, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next person is Stacy Smith.
Hello, I represent UMBLE Parents Care. And we know so much more than we did this time two years ago regarding COVID. The original debates about the need for distancing and masking have been proven time and again that when used consistently and properly to be effective in decreasing spread and disease of COVID-19. The virus has changed more than once, but our approaches to combat it have evolved. We have testing now, vaccines, and more information about effective treatment. And through it all, masking and distancing have remained as necessary tools. Delta was a good example of the swift impact a surge can have within our schools. We're very fortunate that thousands of UMBLE ISD children who contracted the virus within the first month of school were largely able to recover at home, though we know that wasn't the case for every child. Omicron is proving to be much harsher among the pediatric population with Texas Children's Hospital reporting a dramatic increase in hospitalizations due to COVID-19. We saw the impact Delta had on attendance to the district with some classes falling below 60% of students in attendance and some grade levels barely averaging above 70% for over a week. Of course, we know the challenges that schools also faced keeping classrooms and facilities staffed. We learned a lot in the fall, and we hope that we're not doomed to repeat ourselves. As you and district administration monitor the progression of Omicron, please take care to remember that dashboards are only as good as the testing and reporting behind them. New quarantining guidance is only as effective as the protections in place once students and teachers return to school after contact or illness. And they're only as effective as the encouragement behind them to do so. It certainly isn't helpful to replace the absence from one student to another if someone returns back to class too soon and continues the spread. We know so much more, and right now, we know that Harris County has increased the threat level to Red. Medical professionals are seeing a rise in severe disease in children more than any other variant. We know that testing on school campuses helps curb the spread of COVID-19, and that TEA has provided the funding, as well as contracted providers for you to work with. We know that the younger and vaccinated populations are at risk for higher risk for transmission and illness with Omicron. And those who are 5 to 11 have only had the vaccines available for about six weeks, and not all are fully vaccinated. There is a predicted end to this surge. Our actions now determine how soon that end can come and how many are infected along the way. We can see from other districts, such as Richardson ISD, that instituting a temporary mask policy can be effective. Spring ISD, where our Board President teaches, is providing at-home tests to families. Other districts are testing all students before they return or implementing a test-to-stay approach. We don't have to do all of the things, but we also don't need to do nothing. Providing on-campus rapid testing with parent permission, increasing the days that PCR testing is available in conjunction with the county from one day a week to two to three days a week at least, holding vaccine clinics, and strongly encouraging and modeling mask-wearing would make a measurable difference in spread.
Thank you so much. Your time has expired. Thank you, Ms. Smith. We really appreciate the comments.
Thank you. Mr. Eric Willing?
Good evening. My name is Eric Willing with UMBLE Parents Care. Our humanity comes out in different ways when called upon. The absolutely caring actions and genuine responses to natural disasters are a good example of the capacity we have as a community to care for one another. No one sat idly by and left it all up to emergency services. Folks helped one another. Folks did what needed to be done. Collectively combating a pandemic, however, seems to fuel disagreement, anger, and divisiveness. Why is that? Why is personal convenience prioritized over public health? Why haven't we seen the same kind of large-scale selfless action in community spirit with this pandemic? Why can't we all find the common ground that begins with the safety and health of the children of UMBLE ISD? The time is quickly coming where we won't have emergency services to help us because they're all getting sick too. Now more than ever, over any point over the last two years, children, especially our youngest, are at the higher risk of becoming critically ill. That is a truth that doesn't have room for debate, and our community is not stepping up to protect them. The proactive measures we know of are effective at keeping them safe are dwindling by the day. When we think about the future, that future when our children are making difficult decisions for the future of their children, what foundation did we build for them? What example did we create for them? Did they see us seek out the truth and knowledge to guide our actions? Did they see us care for one another? Did they see our discussions result in understanding and collective action? Will the great imitators that are our children have something great to imitate? These moments we are all surviving will imprint on them and have already. Our history will surely tell how well we all handle that right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And then last, we have Erin Green.
Good evening. My name is Erin Green, and I am a current taxpayer in UMBLE ISD, a mother, and a former public, private, and chartered school teacher. In November, the Board announced that a health clinic is to be built on the UMBLE High School campus and will be available for all students in the district. The passing of the ESSA, Every Student's Decided Act, in 2015 sets up clinics and discusses the requirements in Section 8543. Clinics such as the one this district desires have been established throughout the 50 states. This is a federal law which is unconstitutional since the constitutional does not authorize the federal government in education or health for that matter. In an article written by Memorial Herman, the hospital stated that the following services will be concluded: well exams and sports physicals, sick visits, preventative preventive health care, including immunization and health education, mental health counseling, including ADHD, nutritional counseling, assistance applying for insurance programs, and other health and social services. Furthermore, it also stated that transportation from schools will be provided by UMBLE ISD transportation as needed, and that parental consent is required. How will this happen if the district takes the student to the clinic? Will the parent meet the child there? Typically, in other districts across the country, parents sign their rights away by signing paperwork without reading the fine print. It is the parent that should be responsible for the child's health since they know their child and have their best interest at heart. Across the country, stories are emerging where students are being coerced to take the COVID jab. In California, at Los Angeles Unified School District, a middle school student was told he could have a slice of pizza if he received the COVID shot. Students brought a consent form home to be signed and returned, and regardless of whether the form is signed or not, the child is present at school, and that is considered consent. In closing, it is very concerning that the lines are being blurred between parents' rights and district and state responsibility. Ensuring parents' rights is my primary concern since parents are the child's advocate and want what is best for their child. Any other person making these decisions for the child may not have the same objective in mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And happy School Board Month.
Thank you. Our next item, comments by individual Board members. I will begin to my left, Mrs. Parker.
Okay, well, it is one of my favorite months of the year because I literally cannot wait for the UMBLE rodeo. It is gonna be great. The barbecue cook-off starts at the end of the month, and just cannot wait for that. We had a very special guest come talk to the advocacy committee before the School Board. Our State Board of Education member, Dr. Audrey Young, visited, and I've met Dr. Young many times. She's a fellow lumberjack. Really excited to see her. But she shared some things going on at the State Board of Education, and just, I wish she was here because I really, really want to publicly thank her for all of her good work. for all of her good work for the district. But really just want to welcome everybody back and say, have a wonderful spring semester.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kertopper?
Welcome back, everybody. I have to say, the video at the very beginning, I had to wipe a couple tears away. It was, thank you. Thanks for the gifts and thanks for all the kids coming and presenting. Welcome back to the administration and the teachers. It's going to be a great 2022. And I'm thankful to be sitting here, just as the rest of the trustees are too. We're the fortunate ones and we're happy to serve and it's going to be a great year. So, thank you. Thanks for the gifts.
I will circle back to Mrs. Parker.
I would be in big trouble with my mother if I did not thank everybody for the wonderful gifts. I am so sorry and please forgive me. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Perfect. I get it. Okay, down to my right, Mr. Holmes?
Sure. So, I don't think I'm deserving of any of these gifts, but I'll make a deal with each and every person in group and team that gave them to me. I'll go ahead and move forward and try to make sure I earned them. All right. But thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sitton?
Yeah, first and foremost, this is, this never gets old. This is my 11th one of these. And when you come in and I think one of the speakers said it best that we put in a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of hours. And very seldom do we get a lot of thank yous. We get a whole lot of those opinions out there, but not many thank yous. And a day like today is much, much appreciated. So, I'll switch gears though. This, as Ms. Parker said, this is undoubtedly my favorite time of year. Rodeo, that's my people. That's my folks. And 75 years, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about it in a few minutes. But I've said this, just probably every year about this time. The FFA program is very dear to my heart because of what it does for kids. It's not just about raising an animal. It's not just about being part of a program. It's about developing leaders and they do such a great job of that. And again, I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to committee. So, I'll give it back to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mrs. Morrison?
Well, I'll ditto. It's the best time of the year. Just a huge thank you for that. The best paycheck ever was that video. And as we all know, we give lots of hours, but that's the best paycheck you could ever get. Just a huge thank you to the FFA for, let's see, naming Lynette Calfee as in honor. Ms. Calfee's been around a long time. Outstanding lady. Put in a tremendous amount of work in this district. Great teacher, great assistant principal, and in fact, she was my son's assistant principal. But just huge, huge thank you for that. And a huge thank you from all the schools and all the children that the best part of it is truly is going through and reading all these notes they give us. They are cute. They're sincere and it just kind of makes your day. Because you know, you think about all the people that aren't happy and all the people that are happy. It just levels it out because all the students, most of them are happy. And they just, or they'll let you know in a very respectful manner, in a fun manner. So, that's, this is definitely, and rodeo, oh, you can't beat it. And I hope to see all of you out there at the FFA sale. I happen to have some young folks that are hopefully showing this year. I mean, they're showing. We'll find out how well they do and see if they make the sale, which I'm very, very excited about. And most of the people on this board know I truly enjoy that sale because it is fun. But seeing what it does for our kids is just phenomenal. So, I'll stop there and hopefully I thanked everybody enough because it truly is a very special time. And really, I'd like to thank you. You too, the staff that makes this district so wonderful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have my normal long list of events and groups and everyone to thank because I knew what would be coming. So, there'd be plenty of people to thank. And as everyone has said, and this is a great time of the school year. It's a great way to start it off. And everyone, welcome back. Thanks to all the staff who helped the students get some of these things together for us. And as Mrs. Morrison said, it is fun to look through and read the notes. And I got a whole file drawer, I think, now over all these years. And I've saved them. Jamie thinks I'm a little crazy, but it's hard to fart with some of that stuff. And again, thanks for all the, we've got plenty of t-shirts again. It's good. And all the other things. It's just, it's just fun. And it's, it really is a labor of love and I think everyone up here would say the same. And yeah, we get hammered sometimes, maybe a lot of times, but it's okay. It's times like this that makes it up. And also knowing, and again, as Mrs. Morrison said, because when you visit campuses, you see the students and the staff too. And people are pretty jazzed up and that's always great to see. And you just, you feel the energy. You really do. You feel the excitement when you get to visit campuses. And I know we're going through a little bit of a pickup right now, but we'll get through this too. And we've got a lot coming up. Next month, we'll be looking at moving the district forward. And so, thank you, everyone, for all that you give us and make this so worthwhile.
Thank you. Wow, wow, there is so much. First, I wanted to thank the J R O T C from Umbel High School. This was their first time presenting colors, so I think they did a wonderful job and actually even led us in the pledges. So, that was actually pretty good. Yes, I mean, the video, definitely. I had tears as well. I mean, it's always personalized and thank you to the communications team for, I know y'all probably had a lot to do with that wonderful video. It definitely is always moving. That and the book about our year and what we've done. It's nice to always look back and kind of like Mr. Scarfo said, I save everything. So, I have all of these things, but I truly cherish them. And the gifts, I mean, there's so many. I mean, thank you so much. I know there's probably letters in here and some of those letters from students are my favorites. It's just fun to hear what they ask or comment on as a school board member, what's important to them. It's pretty, it's pretty cool. 75 years for the Umbel Rodeo. I remember the first live auction I ever went to was as a school board member here at Umbel ISD. And it was just the most amazing, exciting event. I was like, wow, I've got to come to this every year. It's really, really fun. So, I do hope everyone comes out. And Lynette Calfee, I served with her on the Education Foundation Board prior to being on school board. She's a wonderful, wonderful woman. I'm so glad we're honoring her for the 75 years. Also, one of the students from FFA mentioned the North Ag facility and how the animals were always on an island because of flooding. This week, I actually, in two different settings, had an opportunity to publicly thank Congressman Brady and Congressman Crenshaw for their efforts in helping us to expedite FEMA funds and get that off the ground and get it started. So, I'm so glad. And I did tell both of them, they're welcome to come here and see it when we're ready to open. So, I would love for them to do that. Well, we also have some resolutions, so I'll just thank everyone that sent them on behalf of the board. Let's see. First, we have one from Commissioner Rodney Ellis. Thank you. We have another from Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee. Thank you. One from Congresswoman Sylvia Garcia. Thank you. Oh, and yes, one from Ms. Dr. Audrey Young, who spoke to us earlier. She's the representative for our area for the State Board of Education. Thank you. And thank you, Audrey. I know she's not here right now, but for coming and sharing what exactly your role is and how it applies to Umbel ISD. And last, oh, from our commissioner for our area, Commissioner Jack Cagle. So, I think he's still our commissioner, right? Not for long, but he is currently. Thank you so much. Happy New Year to everyone and I hope you all had a blessed holiday season. I think that's it. We can move on. Okay. So, we will now have updates from our board associations and committees. First committee is the Advocacy Committee.
Mrs. Parker, sorry. So, we, Audrey Young did come and speak to the Advocacy Committee. Like we've said, she updated us on her role and the things that she does for the district. Robert Sitton and I will be traveling to DC and I will have a really great report next month.
Thank you very much. Audit Committee, Mrs. Morrison?
Yes, Madam President. Just a quick note, the internal audit is about 80% complete on campus operational audits. The Audit Department is beginning the process to schedule CNN's cash counts as well as the department audits. We should have a meeting in either February or March.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sitton, building and planning?
Yes, due to the holidays, we have not met. Our next meeting is January 20th. We'll be welcoming Mr. Holmes to our committee. We'll be going over the, in more detail, the presentation we'll see tonight about the Citizens Bond Committee. Also, looking at all the projects that we have going on right now, finishing up bond 2018. I am very pleased to say that not only have we either started or completed every, every item that was on the 2018 bond referendum, but more. So, Mr. Correa, you and your team, huge congratulations for all the work that y'all have done over the last three and a half years. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Board Superintendent Evaluation Committee, that is me, nothing to report. Finance Committee, Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. We will be meeting late February to get things kicked off. And hard to believe, you know, starting the budget process, well, not really start it. Be the first formal go at it. So, Mr. Beatty and his group will be presenting some preliminary information to us at that point and we'll get it going. But until then.
Okay, thank you. Education Foundation, Mr. Kertopper?
It's rodeo time. So, I'm going to kick it to the king of the rodeo and get a big update right now. Robert Sitton?
All right. Well, thank you. I tell you what, it is a great time. It's a fun time, but it's historical as well. We've talked about the 75th anniversary. The Umbel Rodeo has been going on for 73 years in conjunction with the Livestock Show. We had a little bit of a hiatus in the early 2000s where we didn't have a rodeo for two years and a couple of years that we did not partner with the FFA. And so, we're excited to have those two programs back together. So, January 28th and 29th is the Umbel Barbecue Cook-Off. We're doing some things a little different this year. We want to make sure that everyone in the, in the public understand and know that you don't have to belong to a corporate tent to come out and have a good time. We're bringing the carnival back, live entertainment. We have a public plaza. Your entry ticket, $15 entry ticket is good for the whole weekend. And when you come in, you're going to get a sandwich, a drink, live music. On Friday night, we have Abigail Taylor. Abigail Taylor performed at the Cook-Off Awards when she was like nine years old. And she's now coming back with her full band and I believe she's 20. And she wants to be a part of this year. Mason Crager's cousin performed at the rodeo last year. He's bringing his band, the Gulf Coast Drifters, Friday night on the main stage there in the Cook-Off. On Saturday night, I am really excited about this. Saturday night is Umbel ISD Alumni Night. We're going to start off with Brian Winfield, Umbel High School graduate. He'll be playing on the main stage, followed by Kingwood graduate Gary Kyle. And Gary also performed at the 100th birthday of Umbel ISD, if you were able to attend that. So, both, all of them are bringing their full bands. And for the public plaza, the carnival is going to be on the same parking lot. It's really going to be a community-wide event for that whole weekend. We get into the next week, we have the FFA show. Everybody's talked about the auction and so forth. One of the best things that our Ag Department did was add that freezer sale. If you think about it, when you go into the auction, the top 10 placeholders get to sell their animal. Well, what happens to all those other kids and their animals? The, I believe, the hog show, the swine show is the largest they've ever had. There's 98 hogs that were raised that are going to compete against one another at this year's show. Also, the largest number of steers we've had in several, several years. So, the freezer show, what that does, any kid that doesn't make the sale, then their animal will go into an online sales process and they're calling it the freezer show. And so, every student will have an opportunity to sell their animal in some form or fashion. So, if you were wondering, how do I get involved? That's a great way to get involved. Go to umbellivestocksshow.com. I believe that's right. And you can get all the information on that. Parking, we're also partnering, of course, with the school district overflow parking at Turner Stadium, especially for the barbecue cook-off. You can park there for free. School district buses will be running back and forth all weekend long. We also have a ride-share area in front of the Civic Center. Please don't drink and drive. That's not a good thing to do. And so, lots of transportation. For the rodeo, you'll have the entire, the big parking lot, paid parking onsite if you don't want to ride the bus. Lots of things going on there. You can get tickets online at umbelrodeo.net or dot com. I don't know. Umbelrodeo.net, I believe. So, you can get tickets online. You can get tickets at Cavender's. You can buy tickets at the door for both weekends. Tickets for the rodeo are $20 if you want to be on the dirt in the middle of the action during the concert. That's an additional five bucks. Everybody's talked about Lynette Calfee being the honoree for the FFA show. They do that every year. They pick a family that has really been instrumental and meant a lot to the program. We started last year doing an honor family for the rodeo. And we're pleased to announce that we too are partnering with the FFA and Lynette Calfee and her family are the honor family for the rodeo as well. So, we're really excited about that. And I know I'm missing something. Auction, the actual auction is at 1:00 on February 3rd. Be there or be square. It is going to be an unbelievable two-week period. Carnival, barbecue, rodeo, live music, lots of stuff for the kids, raising a lot of money for kids and their hard work in our community. And I want to see you all there. If you still want to find a way to get involved, we have one other special thing. We're cutting it off on the 15th. You too can become a roughneck sponsor. For 250 bucks, you get your name on a banner, two tickets to either Friday night's rodeo or Saturday night's rodeo. So, don't say that, man, I don't have a company and I don't need to spend $1,000 for a sponsorship. For 250, you can be a roughneck and support our kids. I think that's it.
Is that also on umbelrodeo.net?
Yes.
Okay.
It's dot com. I checked.
It's dot com.
Dot com.
Dot com. I've got all those dot nets, dot coms, dot orgs and all that. So, dot com. UmbelISD, I mean, umbelrodeo.com. All right? Sounds good?
Yes.
All right, perfect. See y'all there.
Thank you. Kingwood Super Neighbourhood Council, Mr. Holmes?
Once I get, oh, okay. Once I get that first meeting, I'm sure I'll have something to report.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I skipped something and I also forgot to say something, so I'm going to go back. The first thing is I'll The first thing is I'll share real quick. I would be remiss if I did not give the utmost congratulations to Mrs. Nancy Morrison as a woman of achievement for family time. Congratulations from the board. I am so excited for you, and I cannot wait to be there in support of you as well, yes. Okay, so I skipped item H. Our next item is comments by the administration. Dr. Fagan?
Thank you so much. I was, I was happy to wait. Well, first of all, I just want to welcome many members of our SEBACK committee, Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. They're over there in blue t-shirts, and so if you didn't know that, we welcome them. Thank you for being here, we really appreciate it. You all have put in a lot of hours, and this is just a few more, we promise. So, but we've appreciated that, and there may be a few more to go after that, but you know how that goes. Next, I say this every year, but I'm just going to keep saying it. I've worked in four different states, many different school districts, and I can tell you that excellence in education starts at the top. A staff, a team like mine, we can have a lot of ideas, we can have all kinds of hopes and dreams for students and for the community, but if the board wants to go in a different direction, we go in a different direction. And that's the way that it works. We, we work, the board is elected to represent the community. This is a wonderful community that wraps itself around our school district and our children to make it the absolute finest place to raise a family and a child. That is what I truly believe, and it starts with this board. And so this one meeting where we all get to stop and say, thank you so much for all of the hours that you put in, the emails, nobody really mentioned that, but you all do a lot of email, and it takes a lot of time, and we appreciate that too. You really take seriously the people that come to you and need support and help. You direct them back to us so we can help them. It really is a community effort, and so thank you for supporting all of the unique programs we have for students, for believing in a personalized approach to education, for believing in assessing the most important things, not what's the easiest to assess, for believing in facilities for all children in all communities, no matter if they're a new neighborhood or an old neighborhood. These are the things that this board has brought forward and supported that I believe makes UMBLE ISD a destination district for children, is the reason that this year we've grown by over 2,000 students in the middle of a pandemic when we were projected to grow 1,000 or fewer students. You know, people will move and be where they want their children to be. And I think that the data speaks for itself, and it all starts with you. So thank you for your support to me, and that allows me to support my team in doing what they do. So sincerely. Tonight, we have before the board an extension of our calendar that has become a fairly favorable calendar. The vast majority of the comments we get back are very favorable to it. The one thing that people still ask us, I'm gonna try to address this, is why don't we match it with New Caney? Why don't we all get together and talk about that? So we actually did that. My team met with the New Caney team, new superintendent brought his team to my conference room. We all sat down and we talked about, why do you do your break then? When do you do your break then? And we all have very specific reasons for the dates that we select. For instance, we give the PSAT district-wide on a certain date, and so that happens to be during a week when New Caney takes off. So we can't change the national testing dates for the PSAT, that's not an option. And so we would have to give up the national date, go to the makeup date, and then if you miss the makeup date, you're just out, which really messes up all of our ability to share back with our board and our community how we're doing as a district. In addition to that, if we went to the April break that New Caney does instead of the March break, then it shortens the STAR testing window. And this is a new, we're entering into a new view of STAR, all online, all of these things, and it just is a better approach for us to have that window available for whatever emergencies come about. You know, we seem to have one every year. And so nonetheless, I just wanted everybody to know that we've heard that feedback, and we've actually met, New Caney's heard it too. We've met together, we know we share staff and students and back and forth, but the reality is we each have very specific reasons why our calendars are the way they are, and we literally look at every single date in choosing all of these things. So I hope that that helps clarify that we have attempted to do that, but unfortunately neither of us were successful in coming together on giving up their reasons or giving up ours. Another thing that we kind of pay attention to is we have a number of students who are at Skonzo Early College High School, so we do try to work with Lone Star and have some sort of collaboration with them on calendar also. So there's just a lot of different things that go into that. Since it's on the agenda tonight, I wanted to have the opportunity to just put that out there and help everybody understand that we did hear that feedback and attempted to remedy it. I think that's it.
Thank you very much, and thanks for your patience.
Of course.
Okay, action items from closed session. Item 4A, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Parker, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion passes. Moving to item 5, our consent agenda. 5A, approval amendments for the regular board meeting held on Tuesday, December 14, 2021. Consent. Item 5B, goods, professional services and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. Consent. Item 5C, budget transfers and amendments including new contingency positions and CNS increase in food and COVID payroll. Consent. Item 5D, bond fund transfers and amendments. Consent. Item 5E, tax refunds. Consent. Item 5F, approval of RFP number 2021-005R, general merchandise. Consent. Item 5G, approval of RFP number 2021-007R, educational and curriculum subscriptions, internet and web database access and software. Consent. Item 5H, general contractor selection for multi-campus fan additions, CSP number 2022-017. Consent. Item 5I, additional staff positions for 2021, 2022. Consent. Item 5J, staff development waiver for the 2022, 2023 school year. Consent. Item 5K, adoption of the district calendar for 2022, 2023 school year. Consent. Item 5L, TASB update 117 and 118 and administrative recommendations, final action. Consent. Mrs. Parker, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda items. Exclusive of those called which there weren't any.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, any discussion?
Who was the second?
All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. There are no action items tonight. Next is our information items. Item 7A, 2020 to 2023 American Rescue Plan, ARP, Act of 2021, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, SR3 Fund Report. Do we have a, an actual report? No? Okay, any questions or discussions from the board regarding this item that we received? Okay, seeing none. Moving to item 7B, report from the 2021, 2022 Citizens Bond Advisory Committee, CBAC or SEBACK. We will have a presentation.
Yes, we will. So as we mentioned earlier tonight, UMBLE ISD's community engagement is second to none. And when we started this process to go out and request folks to come together and form a Citizens Bond Advisory Committee to review all of the information in the facilities study as well as the 2018 bond plan, and move forward with sort of giving the board input and feedback about where to go with this next bond, or if to go forward in this next bond, we were so thrilled to have over 150 people participate. I mean, that's a huge number of people to come together in our community and to dedicate their volunteerism and hours to this process. And it's a lengthy process where members of the committee learn everything from school finance to facility assessment and planning, to the needs of individual programs, the costs, inflation, I could go on and on. And these folks were amazing. They, they did their homework, they showed up, and they gave us a lot of input and feedback that we have utilized to create tonight's presentation. I would like for all members of the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee who are here with us tonight to stand and be recognized for your volunteer service to the district. Okay, so we're going to get started with our presentation tonight, and I want to thank in advance the members who have volunteered to be spokespeople. At the last meeting, we asked people, so what are you comfortable doing? Are you comfortable posting on Facebook, on Twitter, you media, this and that, you know? And there were these brave souls who said, you know what? I'm comfortable speaking on behalf and sharing information and my feedback. And so we welcome them here tonight as part of our presentation. First, I'm going to do, quickly go over our past 2017 SEBACK, which led to a 2018 bond, a bond that we thought would take us quite a few years to accomplish, but COVID allowed us to fast-forward those projects. And our construction team did an incredible job. Billy Beatty and his team had to sequence and sell bonds at a rate that would allow us to fast-forward these projects. But going back to that 2018 bond question, 74% of our community came together and said, yes, we are behind safety, renewal, and growth. And we were very proud of that because as we moved forward as a district, there were some, there were some turbulent financial things, and we were able to concentrate, concentrate general fund dollars on educating children. We were able to do those things because we had bond dollars to repair roofs and chillers and boilers and build new schools and build facilities to replace older campuses, all of those things. So what did we do? Well, just as a brief recap, we upgraded safety on a number of different ways. We have now vestibules at all of our campuses, so if someone who would like to make a poor choice comes to one of our schools, they are not able to access our students without our permission, which is a really important part of school safety we've learned over the years. We have turf at all of our high schools now, so the lacrosse teams, the marching band, the dance teams, and everybody can be out there all the time, and we don't have to worry about killing the grass, creating dirt fields that are not safe, frankly, to play on. And at the time, we started replacing boilers and chillers and controls and all of those things, we know those are important, but then COVID came along and they became a major safety component of our district as we were able to purge air systems from our schools, creating clean air, reducing set points, improving filtration and more. We also were able to create additional door controls and access. So again, when people approach our schools, we have the ability to make sure that they are not able to access our students and staff without our permission. We have dramatic improvements in our wireless capabilities, which is both a safety feature, but also was a feature during COVID for families who wanted to just drive up to the campus and access the wireless outside. We didn't have that capability before this bond. You couldn't access wireless very far away from the building at all. Now, if we have to evacuate, our staff can use the wireless. Some places in Kingwood have pretty significant cellular issues sometimes, particularly in the buildings. The wireless makes a huge difference for safety. We improved our bandwidth and a lot of other things with our technology improvements. In our elementary schools, we were so excited to open Autumn Creek and Lakeland Elementary Schools this year. They're like sister schools, one for growth and one for renewal. They start a new way of thinking about elementary education that brings the ideas from Google and children's museums into the daily experience of our children to increase engagement and thought-provoking environments. We also are in the process of building multipurpose rooms for 20 elementary schools and our CLC. Some people are still patiently waiting for these, but remember, when you do a bond, you have to sequence the projects in a way where you only sell so many bonds at a time so that you don't increase the tax rate. You have to be able to service the debt. And so some of these multipurpose rooms were packaged in Group 1, 2, and 3, and so Group 3 is, is still coming underway and all of that, but they are some of our, our last projects. Our middle schools, KMS, if you haven't been by there, you should. That's a beautiful new building, rising up, and it really sort of pays homage to the livable forest. So we're very proud of that campus, and what a great upgrade for the students and staff at Kingwood Middle School. Autumn Ridge Middle School will open in the fall and will alleviate the crowding at Wood Creek and Westlake. We were able to do middle school wood gym floors, which prepares our students for high school and also creates a lot more sustainability in those floors than the sport court we had previously. And we have done middle school locker rooms. If you have a middle schooler, you know this is a big deal. Those desperately needed to be done. And we are in the process of doing weight rooms at our middle schools. As far as our high schools go, Tassie to High School gained 20 new classrooms instead of 10, a third gym, a weight room, and several CTE classrooms and labs. UMBLE High School is being completely modernized in, with a new front look and entrance cafeteria, gym, also many CTE programs, including a cosmetology salon, which is pretty neat. If you haven't seen the renderings of that, you should. And a new gymnasium because theirs was a little different than our other campuses, smaller ceilings and things like that. We wanted to bring it up to today's standards. Kingwood High School is going to be getting that third gym and a new entrance. I'm really excited for everybody to see the new entrance because it makes a huge difference. And also a nursing lab. Kingwood Park, also third gym, new entrance, and they have many CTE labs, including the Tiny Homes Workshop, which is pretty much famous for what they do for homeless veterans. Summer Creek High School has their third gym, criminal justice courtroom, robotics labs, and also a Tiny Homes outdoor lab. So we're very proud of all of those CTE programs and the personalized pathway they bring to our students. When the 2017 SEBACK put $15 million together and said, we really want to see CTE develop and grow on-campus programs, wow, Larkin and his team, Terry Perkins, did a great job of bringing that to life, based on what our students want and need. Support facilities. We've talked a lot about the North Ag Center tonight, which will prevent us from evacuating many steer on many rainy nights, and Larkin's very happy about that, as are our students. The, again, in the sequencing of projects, our EOC, Chief Cook back there and Assistant Chief Journay have been patiently waiting for the upgrade to the Emergency Operations Center. They have a design now, and they're pretty excited to see that come to fruition. It was one of the last projects in our sequencing last time, as was Charles Street Stadium, which is now under construction, and you should go by and see that. It's going to be what I believe is the nicest subvarstity facility that you will see in the area. We did everything we said we would do. When we met in 2017 with the SEBACK, we came forward with a, a recommendation to the board with input and feedback. I believe Mr. Scarfo was one of the presenters back there in the, in the time. We did every single project exactly as we said, but we were able to do more because COVID reduced the prices of materials as well as labor. And when we saw that happening, many other people pulled back on their construction and said, oh, this is an uncertain environment, we're just gonna, we're gonna pause. And UMBLE ISD said, no, we're gonna push forward because we knew that we would be able to get more for our students and staff and community if we did it that way. And as a result, like I mentioned earlier, Tassie to High School, 20 classroom addition instead of 10, and an entirely new North Belt Elementary School, which was not even in that bond, but long overdue for our students. And we're very excited and proud about that campus when it comes to life. We also used Fund Balance to build a new early college high school, Gaiam Skonzo Early College High School. Something that was also long overdue was a permanent home for our very successful early college high school for our students. And we did all of that, as many of, we talk about this a lot, but I think it's important to note that we did all of that and kept the promise that we would not raise the tax rate for our community. In fact, our tax rate has actually gone down. And so when you sequence your bonds properly over the right amount of time, you refund and get good interest rates, and you make sure that your projects are coming in on, on target and put the bonds in the right sequence, then you are able to maintain the tax rate. And that's something this board has been committed to, and the staff has done. UMBLE ISD is a fast-growing school district. We were projected to grow by about 1,000 students this year. We're well over 2,000 more. We're at 48,080-ish. We were projected to be 52.5 by 2029, but I think that might be coming a little sooner given that we are only about 4,000 students away from that. We also have 51% of our campuses that are over 25 years old, and a lot of those campuses were built during what Dan Bozio from PBK sort of terms the energy crisis, where we built campuses without a lot of windows because it was less expensive to heat and cool them, but we didn't know at the time the impact that has on mental health, engagement, and learning that we do today. We know that those things are vitally important for our students and staff and the way that they feel about coming to campus and being there. So 2021, 22, we couldn't believe it, but it was time to launch a brand-new Citizens Bond Advisory Committee and contemplate the next bond for UMBLE ISD because all of our projects are underway, all of our bonds are sequenced and sold, and we're excited to continue forward in providing the very best safety, the very best... the very best growth, the very best renewal campuses that are available anywhere in the Houston area. And with that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Roger Brown, who's going to go through the process of the C back.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. This evening and just kind of walk us through the process and the work of this committee. They put in a lot of time, as Dr. Fagan had mentioned, but it's, it's, it's an awesome process and we want to share that with you tonight. So this, you're gonna see some pictures here of active work taking place. This group worked in large groups at times. They worked in smaller groups at times. They asked questions. They reviewed projects and we certainly just appreciate all the work of this committee and the time that they've given. We met, every meeting was held at Lakeland Elementary School. And so we appreciate Lakeland's staff, the principal, Ms. Anderson, the custodians for being so generous, allowing us to use their facility and show off their facility and show off the previous bond and the work that can be done and supported by this community. And so we appreciate that. So how did it all kick off? Well, we started on September the 16th with an orientation. We had two orientations you could choose to attend either orientation. And this is where we just reviewed with those that might be interested in serving on the committee. We reviewed the past bond and we also reviewed the purpose of the committee and the, what they would be doing and what they would be looking to and what they would be committing to as being part of this bond committee. And so then we started the work actually on September the 27th. And there were six meetings, what I'll call work sessions. And it was open to all that wanted to participate in the community. There was only one requirement to be considered an active member. You had to attend at least five meetings. And the purpose for that is because of all of the discussion and information that's provided, you really needed to hear it in order to be able to give input. So we had 157 committee members. That's incredible. That's a 25% increase over last time. What dedication that is to our community and that's what makes this community so great. We actually had 132 of those that achieved active membership. So out of the 157, so that's a lot of dedication. Of those members, 70% were non-staff and 30% were staff. That's pretty good makeup, pretty good dedication. Well represented here, all levels. You can see that we had representation for the high schools, the middle schools and our elementary schools. So very well balanced on the representation. We also had 45 of the members that achieved perfect attendance. And that is those members that are listed there. And just think about that, 17 and a half hours of work through this process. Perfect attendance for 45. So we certainly want to thank all of those members, but really just all of the members that showed up every time we had a meeting for some good discussion. So as the committee worked through this process, these are the goals that guided their work. And Dr. Fagan had mentioned safety, you know, that's always going to be a priority for our community and for our district. She mentioned growth. We've been growing now for some time and previous bonds have been addressing that growth. As you will see, this bond addresses that growth and will continue because we're going to keep growing through this decade and we know that. And so that will always be important. But the one I really like here is builds culture of family and cares for all students because as Dr. Fagan shared in the last bond and that of how we address that. And you'll see in this proposal that this committee picked up that banner and wanted to make sure that we represented all the students and the needs for all the students with this bond proposal and recommendation. So the first three bonds meetings, the committees learned some background, learned about some of our previous projects, learned about our facility assessment. We did the demographic update. We talked to them about that as well as, this was new and it was a lot of fun. We took a field trip. So we went to Westlake. We went to Ross Sterling and we stood on the Insperity Adaptive Sports Complex because as you'll see here as we go through, one of the items that we're looking at, our playground upgrades, well, we wanted them to, you know how we have mulch? Well, Insperity doesn't have that mulch. And so we wanted them to stand on that material and get a feel for that. And so we went to the Insperity complex and took a look at that. And that was a fun night. Then on November the 8th, the committee was in, put, placed into eight groups. And what they did is they started looking at the 30 projects that were being presented as well as the needs of technology, as well as career tech, and also P1s and 2s, our priority ones and twos. So they took all of this information and started looking at that. And so let me remind you all on the priority ones and twos, those are Nolan's projects, what we can call Nolan's projects. Those are your roof, your chillers, your air conditioning, your carpet, your paint. And those are all important in what we do each and every day. We don't think about it. Like the other night I went out, car didn't start, had to get a battery. I don't tell people, hey, you want to come see my new battery? It's really exciting. Cost me $200. But it's important when it doesn't work, you know? You just don't think about it. It's the same for what, for what our maintenance staff does, you know? Nolan knows when the air is not working. He gets that call. And so it's important that we have to maintain those. We have a lot of buildings, we have a lot of facilities. And so they talked about those things and they used these project lists here to guide that discussion. So they talked about the 30 projects at this November the 8th meeting. And so you can imagine eight groups having a lot of discussion. Several of us were there. In fact, most of us, as I look around this room, were there to help answer questions. We would be called in to answer questions the group might have about our specific area. And so they really got into it on November the 8th. So between November the 8th and November the 18th, we took the work from that committee, tallied the results. And then when we met on November the 18th, we shared the results of their work with them. And you can see from this, there were 13 projects that had pretty strong consensus. So of the 30 projects that they had looked at, 13 of them came out of that first meeting, that first really work session of November the 8th and had strong support by all of the groups. And so we shared those projects with them. And so here they are, I'm going to walk through them with you. We had the Mosaic building along with some educational support services offices that had strong support. Summer Creek High School Classroom Edition, you know, that's a growing area. You know, that Westlake corridor area down in the southeast portion of our district, heavily growing. And so this would help Summer Creek High School address some of that growth that we see not only now, but in the future. The Humble High School Phase Two project, keep it going. We have a lot of great work going on in that complex. And so the committee was very supportive of let's keep going, let's keep working on it. Then for our middle schools, Ross Sterling Middle School Replacement, kind of like we've done Kingwood Middle School. You gotta decide, is it time to replace or renovate? And we feel pretty strongly and the committee did that, you know, for Ross Sterling, it might be time to replace that facility. And so then think about that entire complex there at Umbel High School. It's going to be amazing. Committee really supported that. Middle School Second Practice Gyms, you know, as we build our new middle schools, we're adding an extra gym, practice gym. So we want to go in and do that at the facilities that are middle schools that do not have those. Committee supported that. And then Middle School 11, again, that's just for growth. You know, we're going to open Middle School 10 this fall, but we need one more. Now, I think that might do it, we'll see. But Middle School 11 is part of our future for the growth in our southeast portion of our, our community. At the elementary level, again, some kind of thing that we've done with Lakeland and North Belt, a replacement as opposed to putting money into an older facility. Sometimes you just have to do that. It's just time to replace it as opposed to putting more money and more money and more money into it. And so the committee really supported that. And then a Summerwood Elementary Edition, again, that's, that's for the growth in that area. We think we can manage the growth with what we've done with the elementary schools that we've opened down there, plus some attendance changes that we made. We think we can help that growth in that southeast quarter with that, with this classroom addition to Summerwood without at this time having to build another elementary school. So we think we can do that and the committee supported that. You know, we have a strong, strong fine arts program in our, in our community. A lot of students involved in it as, as you all know, because you attend the concerts and the plays, you see the performances of halftime at, at our football games. And so, you know, we just really through the facility assessment, it's time to upgrade those facilities for our fine art students that are high schools and our middle schools. And then, you know, one of the things that we looked at is we, we have a, we have a strong dance program in this community and it starts now at the middle school. And so we want to be able to provide them a dedicated spot, place to practice. Because right now they're, they're, where can I find a place? You know, and they work together in, on the school district level or at the schools. They've worked together to find places, but we want to give them a place. We want to give them a home. And so the committee supported that. Here's the playground areas that will be impacted at all of our elementary schools. And this is just going to be a huge upgrade to our playgrounds, you know? There, there are different spots and different levels throughout our district. And so this will really upgrade and equalize our playgrounds. And so they'll each have a theme at our, at our elementary schools. And so that's going to be pretty exciting for our community. Think about our students during the day. But then I was thinking, I was looking at this and I was thinking about my grandkids. And I know how hard it is to get them away from the playground now. And I was just thinking, they will never want to leave this. And we can go all across the district when these are in and do different themes, you know? What are you interested in today? And so this is going to be great for our community. And one of the other things about it is it's very accessible to kids. So when you look at that flooring there, when you think about all of our students and their needs and those with special needs, accessible plus equipment there. So they get to all play together and they have access to it. So that's going to be, that's going to be exciting. And then to the right there, you know, for our older students, we want to, we want to provide more of a fitness type facility, outdoor facility for them. And, and we think that will spark their interest as well, as well as the community. There's a, there's a gentleman I see early in the morning when I'm out walking my dog and he is at the elementary school and he's trying to do pushups on some of the equipment. And I just think, man, people like that are going to love this for after hours and on weekends. And then our students and our ROTC students, our PE, being able to work out on, on equipment like this. Incredible. And the great thing about where we live is you can be outdoors most of the year. And so this equipment will be used tremendously by our, our staff, our students and our community because it's accessible. So excited about that. And then for our child nutrition support services, we want to move the freezer from the warehouse over to the child nutrition facility. We think that'll be better for them. We want to do some office renovations there. But the move in the freezer will also provide space at the warehouse, which we desperately need. As Nolan could tell you, we desperately need space at the warehouse. And so it's a win-win, win for child nutrition and a win for the district and warehouse space. And so the, the community supported that, the committee supported that. So we're excited about that. All right, then on November the 18th, besides learning about the 13 projects that were heavily supported, strong consensus, there were seven projects that had support from three, four or five groups. So there was some support for it, probably needed some more discussion. And so that's what they did November the 18th. Learned about the 13 and then really started working on these seven projects that some supported and some just weren't sure. So that was the work on November the 18th. And you can see here of the seven with the green checkmark, six moved forward. So those six are Umbel Phase Three. Let's finish Umbel. Not only do Phase Two, but let's keep it going. Let's get it while we're here and let's get that knocked out. So that's exciting for them. An early learning center was, was moved forward. That's for our pre-K students and currently they're housed at different facilities, elementary schools throughout the district. And again, some more educational support services offices. We, for example, right now, we have about 100 staff members that work under Henry's team that are at the old Lakeland Elementary. So we're using every space we can. And so, and, and it ties into the work they do. They work with early learning, they work with Mosaic. Also move forward with some daylighting here at Centennial Elementary. And look at those skylights. I mean, when you walk in there, it's, it's daytime. You know it, you see the lighting, you feel it. And we all know how important lighting is to what we do each and every day. And you've been to some of our older facilities, they just weren't built like that in the day. We just didn't do it, we didn't think about lighting and how important it is to our learning process. We do now. So when you go into all of our facilities, you see that, all of our new facilities. And so we want to bring that into some of our elementary and middle schools that need that. And then our, our high school campus baseball and softball turf, they looked at that. And that's important because, you know, right now they're grass. Hard to let outside clubs and organizations on those fields because of the wear and tear on the grass. But then it's also hard on our student athletes and our students when it rains. And we do get rain, well, they're delayed, can't play today or we have to find someplace else. Well, by doing a turf, not only can you allow outside organizations to use the facility now, clubs, little leagues, but you can also let it drain and we're ready to go. We're ready to play our games. And so high school turf for the baseball and softball, pretty important. Yeah.
If I could just ask a question on the daylighting, because this isn't what I, I thought and maybe it's not. Are we saying that at the older elementary campuses and middle schools that it would be more akin to this? I, I thought it was thinking more in turn, I thought, at least how I understood before, it was more like solar tubes and, you know, coming into rooms and not, not looking.
We're really trying to work with, we'll work with the architects on really trying to open up as much as we can. I mean, each facility is going to be different, but it's really talking about bringing real lighting in to our facilities.
We'd be breaking out roofs.
Could be, could be, could be walls with putting outside windows in.
Because that's very different from.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we, the architect said solo tubes, whatever, but that's not the same experience as skylights and windows. So our, what we sent back to the architects, which is why the, the dollar figure is where it is frankly in this part is we said, we want to bring skylights and windows to these campuses that were built without them.
And then of the, of the seven projects, also moving forward was the South Transportation Center. You know, we've opened the Northern Transportation Center this year. And so we wanted to take a look at doing some renovation and some work there at the Southern Transportation Center to bring it up to, to a similar level. And then a daycare, we serve, I think Lucy told me today, of close to 100 usually at our daycare. Serve 100 students there. We have 100 babies for the most part. So we talked about, what do we need, do they need a facility, a new facility? And so committee moved that forward as a recommendation. So this was from the, this was from the November 18th meeting. So they started with the 30 projects, narrowed it down, took 13 off. We love those, moved those forward. We wrestled around with seven more projects that had some support. Six of those moved forward. So out of the November 18th meeting, as we were heading into the December 2nd, which was the final meeting, there were 19 projects that were moving forward. But some of the things we heard from that final meeting is, yeah, we really love all these 19 projects. from that final meeting is, yeah, we really love all these 19 projects. But I'm just not sure, did we leave enough funding in there for technology and career tech and, and Nolan's P1s and 2s? Because this is a seven-year bond possibly. Is there enough money in there for that? So after the November 18th meeting, Dr. Fagan and several of us got together and we started looking at the projects, listening to what the committee had said and thought, okay, so are there some options we can bring back to them at the December 2nd meeting for them to review that might address their concern here for technology, career tech and P1s and 2s? And so that's what we did at the December 2nd meeting. When we met with them, we said, okay, we've got three options we want you to look at. We want you to look at each and every one of them and we want you to tell us, are you in favor of this option? Or are you not in favor of this option? And so that's what they did. They voted. They voted on each and every one. You like it? You don't like it? So here's option 1A. And this is what the committee came out with on, uh, November the 18th. So if we went with what we walked out on November 18th, this is what it would look like. 19 projects, $631 million. Technology would receive 30 million, CTE 10, and P1s and 2s, $79 million. That was concerning to them. And here are those projects. So when they looked at this, 27% viewed this as favorable. So when we got together on December 2nd, 27%, yeah, it's okay. So here's option B. So you'll see 17 projects listed here. What's not listed in these projects are the daycare and the Southern Transportation. Daycare would stay where it is, which it can do. And the Southern Transportation, we thought, well, maybe there's some things we can do through other funding sources to assist with upgrading the Southern Transportation Center. So by doing that, technology was bumped to 35 million, career tech 14, and the P1s and 2s at 85 million. So we, we increased it a little bit. But we had to take out some projects because we're telling, we're talking about $750 million. That's where we are, 750. So that's what we're trying to balance.
And I'm, I'm glad you said that because the, the question I've got to Mr. Beatty is, what is our capacity at this point?
750 was, uh, our starting point that we felt comfortable at the time of starting the CBAC. Uh, at, you know, we just had a recent sale, um, in November where we had some great interest rates and, um, high demand for our bonds. Um, taking that into consideration, um, and where rates are at the moment, I think that we could probably go up to about 780. Uh, you know, that, that's kind of, uh, still falling in line with that, uh, seven-year timeframe and not having to increase our INS tax rate.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we were playing with 750. That's what we were working with, 750. So we tried to balance it there. And so that's what we did in 1B. And you can see, these are the projects listed there. It's the, it's the ones we've reviewed minus the daycare and the Southern Transportation upgrade. 57% favorable by the committee. That's better. And then C. One C, option 1C, 16 projects. What's not listed there, uh, it excludes the daycare center, the Southern Transportation, as well as the Early Learning Center. And so those projects were removed. Uh, the Early Learning Center is a $43 million project. And, you know, after listening to the committee and the discussion, we just felt like, you know what? This might be one we need to pull back. Uh, we might need to have more discussion about that. How does that impact our families? Uh, going to one center versus being spread out into our elementary schools? Uh, what does that do to the capacity of the elementary schools if we pull those out? Um, and then would our families really be interested in that kind of a facility? So I think, you know, we just felt like, maybe we need to have more discussion and make sure that's the right thing we want to do for our community. And so we pulled that and that's why. So the other thing we did do though, is we added, because the Early Learning Center had the offices for, um, uh, some of our educational support staff. We went ahead and tagged that back onto Mosaic. So we added another $5 million onto the Mosaic project so that we could add those offices there. So they would have about a, a 150 offices tagged onto the Mosaic facility. And it's centrally located for our staff right there because it'll still be located, uh, where the CLC is, where it is really now. But they're just, they're just in really kind of, uh, portable facilities. This would be replacing that. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so one question I have. So I just want a little clarification. So if we're looking at, you know, going down to 16 projects, why such a high increase in some of the other areas, especially like the P1s and P2s? I get the 750, 750 is kind of where the, the line was, right? But why isn't, why aren't we lowering that amount rather than, um, the bottom line, rather than increasing the P1s and P2 amounts and the CT amounts? Like, just want an understanding of why that number is not decreasing.
The, the 750?
Yes, in each scenario, it's 750.
It is 750 because that's what we were shooting for. So you take the total of the projects?
Right.
And what we took off? So what we took off when you go to the 19?
Correct.
We took, we added that to the technology CT and P1s and 2s.
Right, no, I understand that. But I'm saying, why do that? Why not just lower the bottom number?
Oh, you mean the 750?
Yes.
Uh, we could, but you still have to address technology, CTE and the P1s and 2s if you want more funding in those.
Okay. Well, and I just wanted to add, so, and you all didn't see this, but technology did a presentation and the range was, what was the, the bottom in, Chris? So it was 35 up to 60 was the, the range. And we have to remember, I think this is, those are big numbers, but you have to remember it's seven years, which is a long time. So technology would have to live within that for seven years. CTE last time got 15 million. And that worked out great, which is what they were hoping for that or a little bit more this time. And then again, it was 100 million last time in P1s and P2s, wasn't it?
It was 100 million in just P1s.
Last time. Hundred, 135 total. That was again, not, that's only for what ended up being like four years. And this is seven. So we just have to remember that the length of time impacts these numbers, which I think is one of the reasons the committee was kind of nervous about these numbers being so low, given what we did last time for these areas and how well that worked.
Okay.
And then Nolan did a big presentation to them about, oh, I really need this, you know?
Blame it on Nolan.
He did do that. He said, come on, you guys, at least 100 million.
Stop my P1s and 2s.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
No, no problem. Absolutely. That's for sure. Okay, so, um, these are the, these are the projects from that 1C that we've, we've, we've already talked about. And as the committee looked at this on December the 2nd, it had a 70% favorable rating. So that's where this one landed. And I think they just felt comfortable with, we were able to provide more funding because I think that was always a concern for the P1s and 2s, the technology and the career tech.
Roger, can, can you click back two slides? Can you click back to the preferred option? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure, sure. Okay, so we were blessed to have great, uh, committee support, uh, from this community. And, um, tonight we have four of those committee members that are here and they just want to talk about their experience, uh, with this bond committee and their thoughts. And so to start us off, I'd like to introduce Ms. Hollingham.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Good evening, Board of Trustees and Dr. Fagan. My name is Hollingham. I'm the proud parent of Nick. He is a sixth grader at Riverwood Middle School. And Ellie, she's a third grader at Deerwood Middle School. Our family moved to this area in Umba ISD in July 2021, last summer. Between my husband Michael and I, we have a combined 80-plus years of living in this greater Houston metropolitan area. We've been raised here, educated, built a career, grew our career, and now are raising our family, um, in this area as well. And although we've lived in many different places, we know this region of Texas very well. We research area school districts. Um, we visited our top school choices. My tour of Riverwood Middle School and a meeting with Dr. Brown in February 2021 kind of sealed the deal. We had many discussions. The values of the district very much mirrored those of my family. Um, we knew that this would be a community that would be a great fit for our family. So after returning to Houston this, uh, this past, uh, winter, uh, full-time from Washington DC, we decided to settle in the dis- in this district and we could not be happier. The top criteria for us as a family, no matter where we settle, is a high-quality education in a thriving community. Our children are so content. After this first semester and a few months, they're very happy with their surroundings. They love their school, teachers, classmates, the staff. And I couldn't see, you know, them coming back and, and just the, the, the excitement, the friendship and the activities that they've been involved with. Um, you know, they come from a very small private school. And so we thought the transition would be difficult, but they're extremely resilient. And so it was almost a non-event when we moved in the district and they went to different schools, much larger environments and settings, but they settled in very, very well. In the words of our very wise third grader Ellie, she came home one day this fall and said, mommy, I love this school. So I nonchalantly asked her, why? Tell me why. And she said, it's the people. And so she gets it and both of our children get it and we really, really enjoy the community. With such an emphasis on education for me and for my husband, the best way to get involved is to get active. And we got active at the local schools and I saw an opportunity to get active with CBAC. I saw the ad. I attended an orientation, one of the orientation meetings that Dr. Brown spoke about. And I realized that this is very important work and it's a great way to get involved with the school district. Each meeting was extremely informative. As Dr. Fagan had stated, there was PASA, there was data, there was things to learn about P1s and P2s and just, you know, so much, so much that I learned in a short period of time. There was no doubt that there was a tremendous amount of work that went in every single meeting. It was organized, it was disciplined, it was on time. And the committee work, I believe, is just a small portion of the years of planning and all the organization that went into every meeting and then the plans looking forward. Um, I also thought that the leadership representation and the level of engagement was just right because it demonstrated that we're all in this together. Um, I personally found the PASA demographic study to be fascinating. The data provided really good insight into this district. And then the growth models showed what the planning could actually be. And I said, and then so, you know, being a data person, being someone that looks at this because it shows us what the baseline could be and then what are the, what are the growth models? Um, for me, the time vested in the bond committee was extremely valuable. I selfishly feel that I walked away from that two and a half month period gaining more than what I was able to provide to the district and the committee. I truly appreciate the time, um, that everyone has provided in, in this whole process. It was a great opportunity to see firsthand how the district works, what I could, how I could participate in it. I felt extremely honored and privileged to be part of the committee. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam President Dixon, Board of Trustees, Dr. Fagan and Administration. I'm Azdruga Gutierrez and I go by Drew for short. A first-time member of the Citizens Advisory Committee and a proud dad of four kiddos. Yazeed, a 2021 AHS grad. Leila, a third grader at Timbers. Little Drew, a first grader at Timbers. And then Amadeus, a special ed, uh, student at Ascot City Springs. I'd like to commend the Umba ISD staff for a phenomenal job. Uh, as the committee considered projects and for their expertise, as we questioned and, and asked, and, and they addressed all of our concerns during our, our discussions. Uh, kudos to all the committee members as we had a front row seat for some eye-opening info and insightful talks. We had a chance to dream big and bold for a brighter Umba ISD as we have to address the district needs uh, in order to remain the destination district. Um, there are two projects that I like to highlight, uh, our P1s are must-do projects and our P2s are should-do projects. Uh, those are projects that are critical for all of our students at campuses. As Mr. Correa asked during one of the meetings, do you own a car? Yeah. And then you're in the maintenance and operations business. Our cars need the batteries, the oil changes, the tune-ups, the, the tires every so many miles. Uh, so our campuses need the same TLC, uh, like new roofs, HVAC systems, flooring, paint, fire alarm systems, et cetera. The Eat Play and Learn Outdoors projects, uh, are near and dear to my heart. Uh, these projects are tied into the district's vision to build that culture and that, to build on the culture of family and community. These bond projects would phase in the new playgrounds at all the elementary schools and outdoor fitness, fitness structures for the middle schools and high schools. In addition, these newer playgrounds would be themed for each campus, are therefore building on community. The Pour and Play Surface would improve accessibility for our kiddos and Wilches and walkers as well as enhance the fall height risks. This is an awesome, easy way for community to look, touch and feel their bond dollars at work. And they'll be great places for families to gather. And I'm going to say a few words in Spanish. Me llamo Azdruga Gutierrez y soy padre de cuatro niños. Fui miembro del comité asesor de bonos para el distrito escolar de Umba. En cual se consideraron varios proyectos para abordar el crecimiento y necesidades del tristito escolar. Proyectos importantes fueron esos de mantenimiento, funcionamiento y patios de recreo para nuestras escuelas, incluyendo escuelas secundarias. Estamos para servirles. Gracias and thank y'all for your service.
Hello. So I'd like everyone else prepared a little speech. Um, so good evening, Board, faculty, Dr. Fagan, parents and community members of Umba ISD. My name is Brittany Francis. I have lived in the Umba community since 2006 and I have been involved in our, in our district since our daughter, who's sitting right there, uh, started, um, in first grade a couple of years ago. This was my first opportunity to serve on the Citizens Bond Advisory Committee. I found the process to be very informative and very well organized. I really appreciated the time that each one of the leads for each of the breakout sessions allowed for thoughtful conversations, which got a little testy at times, uh, to transpire and to bring in subject matter experts as needed to talk further about certain uh, projects that we want to bring forth. Additionally, I was very happy that our daughter Mackenzie Francis, who was in the third grade Spanish immersion program at Bear Branch Elementary, so I'll be sending her over to your house for lessons, um, had the opportunity to exercise her voice, which is really important, uh, to our family. Um, she asked thoughtful questions that she felt was important for her school district to spend money on for future students. The two projects that, that we were very passionate about were the middle school dance rooms and the daylighting of the elementary schools. Because if you've been to the elementary schools, you understand why I put that down. Both projects will have positive impacts on future students in the following ways. Young dancers will have a dedicated space to hone their craft and proper dance equipment. Dancers will no longer have to use the hallways or cafeterias, which are not adequate in any way for a dancer to practice their craft. I actually had firsthand witnessed experience of some young dancers at the Ross Sterling, uh, Middle School on two different occasions where they were using the hallways, um, to practice. Um, in fact, Mackenzie, who's sitting right there, um, was pretty adamant that we vote for this project because she is a dancer. Um, and she understands the importance of having an adequate practice room. Lastly, the fact that many of our elementary schools lack adequate daylighting inside of their buildings will not only brighten up the atmosphere. of their buildings will not only brighten up the atmosphere, but there are also documented studies regarding daylight and better outcomes in the learning environment that was shared by one of the speakers before we broke out into our mini sessions to discuss each project further. Overall, it was a fantastic experience, and I am happy that Mackenzie and I had the opportunity to participate and have our voices be heard. Thank you, UMBLE ISD, for the amazing opportunity. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Fagan, President Dixon. My name is Vicki Wu. I have been a resident of UMBLE ISD since nineteen ninety-eight. I've lived both in Kingwood in the last fifteen years and Atascocita. I'm the parent of two Atascocita High School students. Hannah is a senior, we are counting the days, and Dylan is a freshman. Hannah attended Timberwood Middle School, and Dylan attended Westlake Middle School, so I can one hundred percent attest to the different facilities that are available in our school district. This election will also be the first time that Hannah will be able to vote. So that'll be interesting. This is my second bond committee to serve on. Initially, I served in twenty seventeen simply because I volunteered in the schools, and I wanted to see what the committee was about. I've always advocated to my children to be an advocate participant in your community, and both my husband and I understand from our own personal experiences the power of education. What I discovered was a unique opportunity to have input into the future of our district. It was also an opportunity to learn the nuts and bolts of how some things run. And quite frankly, in this last, you've never heard anybody as excited about HVAC units as Nolan Correa. And you really get to hear directly from staff and how excited they are about certain projects and how it will benefit their students. I mean, there are things you might not think about, and you're like, oh, okay, now that you've explained this to me, I understand why you need ten million dollars, right? So there was also a lot of collaboration last time and this time between the committee members, and everybody brought different perspectives to the table. And as a result of that last bond, I can drive around now, and I can see the efforts of my work. I, the FFA barns that everybody's so excited about, my own kids both have classes in the new addition at AHS. So it it's, it's a concrete effort. You can drive around, and you can actually see the results of your work. So when the opportunity came up to serve again, I didn't hesitate. And previously, since there'd been a gap in the twenty seventeen bond and the prior bond, a lot of what we did in twenty seventeen were a lot of those P ones and P twos. And so I felt like this time around, we were really able to consider more projects to help modernize those older facilities, bring some of those older facilities up to the standards of newer facilities, and bring a lot of new ideas that have come, come to the forefront in education that we know now. So I really think that we are setting with this bond project, setting UMBLE ISD on a great course for the future, as opposed to just, you know, fixing some things. I'm excited to see what is upon the bond. I'm hoping you go with one C. And I do want to emphasize, there was a lot of collaboration during these committees, and everybody, everybody I talked to, we got a little testy at times, but everybody had one hundred percent the best interests of the entire district. There was never any, like, I need this project or that project. It was always one hundred percent what is the best for students and staff in UMBLE ISD. Thank you.
Okay, with that, one more thank you to all of you who served and, again, who attended this evening. We so appreciate your interest in learning the nuts and bolts of school finance and facility assessments and HVAC systems. It's, it really is wonderful to see that level of engagement and volunteerism from so many people in the community. It's just a reminder of how invested we all are in the education of our students. We did post everything from every meeting on the website. So if you weren't there, or you'd like more information about something, UMBLE ISD, backslash CBAC, it's all there for you to see, including all of the information from tonight, so anybody who wants to see that. With that, I would like to invite the board. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have or...
Okay, Mr. Sitten?
First and foremost, I want to publicly thank the entire committee and all the time and effort you put in. I want to thank the staff for all the work. I mean, it's not something that you just threw together. We did the the first facility study, I think, in two thousand and twelve, and it's been a living, breathing document for almost ten years now. And it's that forward-thinking and getting the community involved. And and I love what Ms. Wu said, that you can, if you were served in two thousand and seventeen, you can literally go around and see the fruits of your labor. And that's so important to understand the work that we're doing. It's not about what what's in it for my kid today, it's what's in it for our community in the future. And and staying ahead of that curve, and that's what these bond referendums do. I do want to throw a little curveball out there. I would like for my colleagues to consider one thing as you're looking at the, these proposals. The reason I ask the question about our capacity, I believe if the committee would have had the idea that there was potentially some extra money, there'd be some other projects or more P one, P two-type money out there, I would not consider maybe going to the max, but a number like seven seventy-five, which would be an additional twenty-five million to give us more flexibility in the future. Because if you look at what happened in the last legislative session, and a lot of the legislation that almost passed, some was delayed, that puts really a, hampers school districts and municipalities when they go to to try and offer up a bond referendum to their community members, and some of the restrictions that are, that are potentially could be placed on that in the future. And we are looking at a, roughly a seven-year bond. I would, I would strongly encourage each and every one of you to think about what a seven seventy-five versus seven fifty package would look like, and not dismissing any of the work that the committee did, incorporating what they've done and adding some additional flexibility for future growth at this point. So with that, I will give it back to you, Madam President.
Let's see, thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Scarfo?
I just want to say thank to the committee members who are here. Thank you very much for all your time and effort. I know I served on two of those committees and had the opportunity to speak both times, too, and recommendations. I know the hard work that you put in. Thank you for doing it. That's another, can seemingly at the time be thankless job, and yeah, there are some heated conversations that go on, but that's great that that happens, because people are passionate about what's what's going on and what they want to see come in the end. So thank you. And I think we have to, you know, keep in mind, though, that not always necessarily going to the max that we can spend. We also have to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and we have to keep that in mind as well, as we, as we really think about this and decide what are the absolute priorities, what we need to do, and not unnecessarily just because we can do something, we necessarily should do it. So we, you know, to keep all those things in mind as we think about this over the next four weeks and debate it, get more clarifications. I know I have more questions, some were answered, and I have some others that I'd like to get a better handle on. So I know we will, we will all do that hard work as we go through this, this next month. So, again, thank you, guys, and thank the staff. And and I know what you guys were saying about that. I know both times I served, the, the work that the staff put in to, to make it seemingly easy in the sense of everything was there that you possibly needed, and then it was up to the committee members to kind of hash through what was there. But talk about these guys stepping up and and being there, having all that information. So thank all of you guys, Dr. Fagan, your whole team, and all that support of them in doing this.
Thank you. Mrs. Parker?
Again, we just want to thank the Citizens' Bond Committee so much. Thank you. The traffic alone to try and get there is is pretty difficult. But but I met, so there, there definitely, I've served on several of the committee, bond committees, and there's definitely some spirited debate at times, but I met Charles Cunningham in a small group on the two thousand and one committee. So so there are some friendships formed, and and I know that. But I just truly, truly, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for dedicating that time to our district and the staff. Thank you, thank you so much.
Mrs. Morrison?
Well, just a huge thank you, along with, as, as most of us have said. The thing about it is, you as community members have given your time, and you were willing to go into those buildings and, and see what this great staff can do, but see the buildings and see where they are and see where they need to go to. And being a retired educator and being in one of those old buildings, okay? I know what you're saying, and I appreciate that, even to the point of the the students that are in those buildings, you know, seeing those things, that, but you were willing to do it. I know I, I served on a bond committee way back when. And the bottom line is, though, giving of yourself and giving the time, we can't thank you enough. So, kudos, okay?
Anyone else? Okay, well, you know, it's it's School Board Appreciation Month, but I think it should be CBAC Appreciation Night for sure. Thank all of you, thank the staff, Dr. Fagan, you know, your leadership is always impeccable, in my opinion. I would truly appreciate that as a school board member. Also, a special thank you to Mackenzie for participating in all of those meetings. That's huge, and thank you for participating, Mackenzie. I can't see you there. There you are. There you are. Okay, thank you very much. Yes, and Holly, Drew, Brittany, and Vicki, thank you so much for sharing your own personal stories and photos of your family, beautiful family members with us as well. Well, that's it on the CBAC. Thank y'all so much. I know it's a lot of work, so I truly appreciate it. Okay, so our last item, eight C, Financial Services Reports, is a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussions from the board regarding this item? Seeing none. Moving to our closing items, are there any topics for future board business? Okay, the time now is nine ten PM. This meeting is now adjourned.